Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, February 19th Board of Selectmen meeting. Seven o'clock, we'll have citizens input. Seven oh five, reappoint interim finance director, town accountant. Seven ten, introduce new IT business systems analyst to the Board of Selectmen. Seven fifteen, child sexual abuse awareness committee discussion or review of new policy and potential bylaw amendment. Seven thirty, annual town meeting warrant. Seven forty-five, FY twenty budget. Eight o'clock, selectmen's update. Eight oh five, town manager update. And then we have several action items. I'll lead the pledge tonight. I'm done.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as it is.
A little after seven, is anybody here for citizens input? Seeing none. Seven oh five, reappoint interim finance director.
So my recommendation is that we stay status quo for the time being. And in hopes that we can come to conclusion about this. I, you know, I know I said this the last time, but I feel a little bit more time that we should be able to address it progressively over the next several months, several weeks, rather. So I'm hoping. So that's all I can report at this point.
How has everything been going?
It's been going fine. I mean, we've been making good progress on the budget. We've made good progress on the warrant. Operationally, we're in pretty good shape. We have further, we're doing, continuing on with the budget hearings. Had a good meeting last few weeks. And we have another one scheduled for tomorrow night with the board, with the advisory committee. And then we're having another, we're planning to do our capital process on a week from Saturday. So we're still on schedule in terms of the budget process, so I don't see any reasons to change otherwise.
But you do see sometime in the future, near rather than farther?
I do. You know, obviously, I'm trying to remain as optimistic as possible to get a good conclusion here. But if I knew something more, that would tell you that, but I'm not in a position to say that.
And Bill, we're on track to hit our regulatory requirements?
We are. Everything so far has been on track to be submitted on time. And we've been having regular meetings about that to make sure we're staying on track with the schedule.
And how's the advisory committee and the finance department? Is that working out? Or is there good feedback?
Yeah, they've been very, they've been reaching out to the department directly, responding to their questions on a pretty regular basis. I just know that there's been a lot of detail that's been presented over the past few weeks. And we're continuing to exchange information as needed.
Jim?
So there's no, there's no date set on this for another extension?
Well, I would continue, I would ask you to continue to look at it every 30 days. I would not look at it for more than, more than at any time.
So has interim finance director been going to the, you said it's good communication? She been going to the AdCon meetings?
She's gone, she's scheduled to go, I think, this week. We've been, Chris and her are going to be switching off, myself. The three of them have been switching off.
There's been three or four of them already. Has she been going and interacting with the?
They, she's been interacting with the chairman directly, and also with individual members.
At the meeting, or?
Not necessarily at the meeting, but I do expect her to be attending the meetings. Because she will be attending some of the meetings.
Has Chris been going to the meeting?
Chris has been going. I've been attending, and Chris has been attending as well. So we've had presence there. And Mike attended last week's meeting, so.
What's the, I mean, this is the one position that this board has jurisdiction over out of everybody. This has been going on three months now, and we keep going to the extensions?
Yeah.
Nothing provided in the packet for any, other than we get here and we listen to quick updates. We're not privy to a lot of the stuff that's been happening. What's the cost implications month to month or week by week that we're doing? Because we're paying a third person now.
We're paying two people. That's correct. No question, there's no question it's a cost.
Plus all the additional costs that are around it. What is this costing?
Well, the only additional cost is for the cost of the professional services that we're providing to the interim assistant, assistance that Chris Laviellet provides. And there's some minimal costs of naming Christine as the acting director. And Chris has been working around 30 hours a week, roughly. Nothing really, trying to stay within that time for that limitation. So we've been scheduling that out and looking at what it looks like financially. The impact is significant, there's no question about it.
So where is that handled in the budget, then?
Well, we'll have to look at the ways to address that. That's why we have, you know, we have a reserve fund, as well as the fact that we have at the end of the year, we look at the town manager transfers to address that as well. And when there's spaces within the budget that we, which happens every single year. We always have that. We start to look at those things now at the end of the year.
So would it be fair to ask, to get some type of a breakdown before we give another 30 days? Because it's been three months, it's going to be four months. We don't know if it's going to be six months or nine months, or the information that's surrounding this has been very, held close to the vest. So if it was anyone else but the finance director, the probably top person, especially around budget season.
Mm-hmm.
So out of respect to the, I came in here thinking, no, because how many more times are you going to ask without giving information? Maybe two more weeks, but I would expect sometime of a breakdown of what the cost is, what the final plan is. Because I don't want to be going week to week and month to month not knowing.
Well, I mean, clearly, it's something that, it's a cost, there's no question it's a cost factor, and I can give you that cost. But it is something that we have to address. It's going to be up to me to try and find a way to fix that. So.
Understood. And that's what's been happening.
Can we at least get the cost and everything for our next board meeting?
Sure. I can do that.
Ask the question? I don't know. I wasn't sure, so I just figured I'd raise my hand.
Can, I mean?
You're the chair.
Yeah, I mean, you're on the icon.
I just want to let you guys know that I think we have four.
Yeah, can you come up?
Oh, sure.
Stephanie McGowan, 19 Roads Lane. I just wanted, a question I could answer for you guys. I believe we've had four AdCon meetings. It's all been budgetary. Normally, the finance director would be there. Christine has not been to any of them. And Chris has been to one. So I just wanted to give you that, give you that information.
That's what I stated earlier.
Yep. No, I think you said Chris had been to a number.
Chris has, Chris has been to, I thought he's been to two.
No, one.
Okay, I thought it was two.
One for him. I didn't know who, I didn't, I still don't know who Christine is. I've never met her. I know she hasn't, and actually, we're meeting tomorrow, and that was a question I was going to have, because we haven't seen her. Normally, the finance director would be at all of our meetings during budgetary time, unless maybe there was some type of conflict. And like I said, we haven't seen her at all. And Chris has been to one meeting.
All right.
So I think that was the same meeting as Water and Sewer, that he attended with them, I believe. But anyhow, I know it was definitely one, because I didn't know who, I didn't, don't know her at all. And I hadn't, that's the first time he was introduced to us. So I know he was at one meeting.
Okay, thanks. So do we want, you'll be able to get us cost breakdown and everything for our next meeting? Do we want to, do we have to reappoint her tonight, or can we push it off till then?
Well, your appointment's only for 30 days.
All right, so we're going to have to make a motion and vote tonight. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Move to reappoint the interim finance director, Christine Dupras.
Second.
For a term of?
Oh, for a term of 30 more days.
Still second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Under discussion. I'm going to vote against this, because I think another 30 days without finance stuff, without a discussion on it, where it's already been at least 90 days. I think this started at the beginning of December. I'd feel more comfortable with two more weeks, and we can address it at the next meeting if we have that information.
I was just looking at the date of that meeting. That'll be on March 5th. So do we want to do it for a two-week period? And we can have all the information in front of us?
I'll, I'll have the information for the next meeting. I would have had it tonight if I'd known that was an issue. That was a question, I would have been happy to provide it.
Well, we've, I said it before, Bill, this is the one position that we appointed. It's been a battle to get even discussed at this, because it was not on our agenda at all when this started. When is it going to end? The details around it, the budget that we spent to date, and what it's going to cost per week to get it done? I don't think it's too much to ask. And I don't think it, it.
So can we amend it to make it a two-week appointment, and relook at it on the March 5th meeting?
Oh, no.
Want to restate it?
Oh, move to, Christine Dupras as the interim finance director for two additional weeks. What was that, May 5th? March 5th?
March 5th.
Till that next, uh, next meeting on March 5th.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor? All right, 7:10, introduce new IT business system analyst. Welcome. Let everybody know who you are.
Good evening. Aaron Heire, Director of Technology for the Town of Foxborough and Foxborough Schools. Here tonight to introduce Sandra DeAndrich. She's our new business, IT business systems analyst. So Sandra comes to us in Foxborough here with 12 years of experience as a business analyst in telecommunications and software. Sandra has a master's degree in management from Eastern Nazarene College, and a master's certificate in business administration from Auburn University. So.
Welcome.
Thank you.
But, no, I was just going to say, we've been working with Sandra for quite some time now. She's been a huge help to us in terms of identifying the operational changes that we've been trying to analyze for quite some time. We're working on a new software to address permitting and the permit process throughout the town. And more often than not, the approach has been to just evaluate a single operation at a time, whereas Sandra's role has been to sort of take, look at all, look at, take a look at a much higher level view of that, and to see how it all integrates with the other various departments. And this has actually worked out quite well. We had a very productive conversation today about a new software that they're looking to integrate and initiate over the next year. And I think it's going to be very, very helpful. Actually, far better than what we've been using in the past. And it's with some added benefits to the software that we didn't think were possible, but actually are going to be, provide us with some GIS capabilities, which we've not had before as well. So I can turn it back to Aaron, but Aaron was very high on Sandra's credentials. And we waited a while to get to her, because we wanted to make sure this was the right fit. And I'm quite, I'm quite pleased with the work that she's done so far.
Do you have anything else to add, Aaron?
Well, so Sandra's been with us just about two months now. And working with her has been quite a breath of fresh air. As Bill said, you know, we've been able to dig into some things that we haven't been able to really get into in the previous years. But she's helped us research and identify some potential solutions for municipal operations and constituent services, as Bill was just speaking to. Looking, looking at what we do here from a much higher level, and helping us evaluate that process that we currently use, evaluate and identify, and document where there's deficiencies, and then turn that into a product specification for this evaluation that we're conducting, again, from municipal operation software and CRM software. So currently, what we're looking to do is, you know, further our IT strategic mission in terms of the integration of data, and having interoperability amongst town departments to improve the level of service that we can provide to our constituents here in town. I don't know if Sandra wants to just share with you some of the things she's been working on the last couple of months? But she's had pretty substantial impact in a short time.
Yes, I have. So in the short amount of months, I got thrown right in. So I've been working with everybody in town. One of the big implementations that I worked on was doing a massive system upgrade. So working that and kind of being the liaison for supporting that upgrade and making sure everything was back up. Also working on the town website and revitalizing that, along with identifying some, identifying some of the systems evaluation to make sure that we actually purchased the best solution for us.
Do we have any questions, or?
Just a little bit of ignorance. So we've got town hall, we've got public safety, we got the schools, and we've got like the DPW and REC and all these different buildings. Is your jurisdiction over that, or is schools separate? Or how does that, on the IT, is it encompassing all of the employees?
So Sandra's, she's part of our joint IT staff.
Yep.
So she's, you know, providing services to all town departments throughout the town.
Okay, so including school?
Including schools, yes. I mean, her primary focus is mostly on the municipal side, because there is, there is a backlog of projects and things that we want to get to. So she's been focusing mostly on the municipal side, but she's also been a great help to us on the school side as well.
Okay. And is this a new position, under your jurisdiction type?
So this position, it's a, it was, previously, the town had a finance analyst position. And when that position was vacated, as many of the, as what's happened with many of the positions, there was a analysis of the position and the function, and what the need was. And the position was retooled a little bit from a pure, purely a finance analyst perspective to a more IT business systems analyst perspective.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, 7:15, Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee discussion, review of new policy and potential bylaw amendments. You guys want to come up? Good evening, everybody. You going to hit somebody with that?
I might. Oh, he might too, yeah.
You left your tool back there. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good so far. How are you?
Good, good. Just tell everybody back home who you guys are.
Bill Dudley, 36 North Grove Street.
From the Walshy Fund.
Bob Correa.
Nancy Stockwell.
Very good.
Got my name?
So your, last time we were together, you didn't have all the information. You guys got it. You all met as a committee, discussion of the policy.
Okay, as far as policy is concerned, as committee, we voted in favor of it with a couple of changes. Linda abstained, so she has her own things to talk about. The only little change that we sought to make was, when it turned to the second page, when it talks about in the case of a non-employee, we'd like to insert the wording, "In the case of a non-employee, the person may be served with a disinvite by the town department or board permitting." I mean, they're often, they're permitting the, it's like the REC. You have to have a permit to work, be on the field, things like that. Access to any town properties.
So can you just?
Take that other stuff out of there.
In the case of a non-employee, that person may be served with a notice of disinvite by the town department or board sponsoring child or adolescent programs?
I wouldn't even put that child, adolescent programs. Should be for anything. Because they don't, there aren't any child sports, youth sports sponsored by the town. They're all sponsored by organizations. They have their own charter, their own code of conduct, et cetera. They're not sponsored by the town. Any of the, the only things that are sponsored by the town are all school activities, in-school, after-school activities, and the playground activities. Other than that.
So what you're saying is this doesn't encompass?
Correct, correct.
The athletic fields and the youth sports.
All the private organizations.
Right. And even to the point of the Foxborough Founder's Day Parade activities, they've got to come to you, ask permission to use the town areas. So you need to encompass all the activities on the town, any town property. Even something at the lane property, that's still town property. So I know the, the, the idea was good and everything else, but it just left out an important segment of activities that happen on these properties.
So would it be a notice of disinvite by the town for any activities on town-owned
Sure.
And does that, that kind of encompasses?
Makes it simple.
Right?
Makes it simple. Doesn't, not child sponsored, not this and that, whatever. It's very simple.
Okay, what else did you guys come up with? Was that?
That's all we, as a committee, came up with. Linda has things she wants to talk about, abstention.
So I just wanted to know, first of all, where is this policy going to live? And it's not a bylaw, so it's not like it goes through AdCon and then to town meeting. I just, I don't know where a policy lives that is, encompasses everyone and not just town employees.
Do we have any other policies anywhere that cover?
The board has many, many policies. The Board of Selectmen has many policies, as does, the town has policies. So we can, the policy can live, I suppose it could live on our website. It could be one of our website policies, as a town policy. It could be, it could be, it could live, you know, in terms of our policy documents. It could be a part of our policy with the, it's going to rest with the committee itself.
Not us.
Well, it's actually, it addresses, it rests with you, but certainly, the board, the committee can refer to it as a document.
But there should be a tab, like on the selectmen's website, for policies, I would think, something like that. Somebody could tab into and say, hey, what are the policies? And it's right there. Well, that's, that's what would happen.
Right, exactly.
Under the policies, yeah.
Are our policies on our website? I mean, I've been on it, I was on it over the weekend.
The reason we haven't put a lot of the newer policies up, or any of the recent, because we're actually up, we're changing the website now. So we're in the process of upgrading some of those things.
There really hasn't been a policy to put up the policies, kind of, all over the place.
Because I know, I mean, we have policies on here, but they're more geared towards all the employees over time, personal bylaws, social media policy.
We intend to have a section called Town Policies.
What's the, what's the status of the website? I guess we missed our opportunity to ask her, is she is?
Well, I think it's probably by July 1st. Is that what, that our plan?
Yeah, in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Pretty significant progress last month.
Okay.
So my question would be, how does an average resident know about this policy that states that, you know, if the chief, after doing some investigation, comes to the town manager, and then ultimately to the selectmen, that, you know, they could reach out to my employer about what has been discussed? Like, I think that's pretty important for a resident to understand the, you know, that this is a policy now. And it's not just for town employees, it's for any resident. I guess, how do they know that?
Well, I think, maybe to begin with, having Mr. Peterson here writing, no, not, I mean, just discussing about the fact that we've adopted a new policy. Would that be included in?
Well, I think it's advocacy is the answer, is getting the word out, that this is, yeah, advocacy is really the, by the committee, by this board, by the town in general, that this is something that we, the town supports, the selectmen support, and this committee supports, and it's something that has been adopted formally.
I would think that that would need to be formally communicated, probably embedded in any user of the town facilities, any organization or any other users, if that's the intention.
Yeah.
Included with any paperwork that they sign off.
Right, that they sign off on, correct.
Yeah.
Now, when you guys do the darkness to light training, you've included all of the youth sports coaches and all that.
Correct.
So part of that could be this policy.
Well, part of the package, like REC gives out, which asks for the insurance and all this other stuff, there's a sign off saying that all the coaches, whoever they have, have taken darkness to light. In that same packet, you could have something like this. So there's no question, they signed off, you know, that they read it, this and that. That's a, that's a gatekeeper. Just like we did darkness to light at the time, because that was a time we could catch them all. And there's, other than that, there was no other time we could really enforce it.
Could you add a note to the, to the bylaw, Section 3A, see policy and procedure on town website?
We haven't gotten to the discussion about bylaw yet, but hold that in your little pocket until we do.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten that by yet.
That's another opportunity to.
It is, but then, just so you know, it's going to have to go through AdCon and town meeting. So, and if you remember, a few years ago, just getting our, the, you know, difficulties we had, just bear with me, Bob doesn't like it because he feels like I'm just wordsmithing. But who wrote this bill? Did town council write this?
Chief and I did, as well as town council.
Okay, because I just, I mean, either we're talking about children, minors, or we're talking about anybody, you know, in general. So the policy addressing sexual predatory behavior, actions against others, I think maybe if it's going to land under the child safety program, that it should be minors instead of others. Just, yep, wordsmithing, but could mean a couple of different things. And then, you know.
Well, I think the word others was interpreted to mean that it wouldn't be just minors or adolescents, it could be adolescents as well.
So then, this isn't about the children. So this really isn't.
Well, it is, it is about the children.
So minors covers that. Minors covers anybody under.
minors, yeah.
So that's just sort of clearer.
Okay.
Was our thought.
Whereas predators like Shan, clearly, I really think it should be posed, not posed. I mean, he posed, but people do pose, so I'd take out the D in that.
Present tense.
Right. Also, this paragraph here, whereas citizens may report behavior. Also, this paragraph here, whereas citizens may report behavior or patterns of conduct that suggest a risk of grooming or other predatory behavior associated with child sexual abuse and exploitation that might be considered hearsay, or he said, she said type of information. I just, I don't understand why you would even put he said, she said in a, in a policy. I, I don't understand that, but. There's. The town of Foxborough Police Department will be solely responsible for investigating those reports and shall keep them confidential in accordance with state law. I guess confidential with who? Because later on, you're stating that he can get the town manager involved as well as you for the end result of what the accused penalty will be. Whether it's just a letter of disinvite, or that they actually go to the person's employer. I mean, I could, I could go on, I just, I, to me, it just seems pretty far-reaching for the ability of the chief, the town manager, and the five selectmen. I know the chief, I wish the chief was here, but, you know, he had stated that, you know, there's a need for someone who has education in professionally looking at circumstances like this. I don't know that you folks or the town manager, and I'm not saying, I'm saying it as positions, because it could change. You know, you're not going to be here in, you know, 20 years, and Bill's not going to be here in 20 years, yes, we trust Bill, we trust you guys that are at the seats right now, and the chief, but we don't know what tomorrow is going to bring. So I just think it's pretty far-reaching personally. I, I can, you know, I bring up our J.C. Creed, and it says that government should be of laws rather than of men. And I think that we have laws, and I think that the chief understands those laws, and when he investigates the circumstances, and he finds that somebody is doing something wrong, then he gets prosecuted, and then he goes to court where he's judged, and he's sentenced if need be. I just think, when going on, what it's put in here is he's, you know, hearsay and he said, she said, it just, it scares me. Especially if we're thinking about putting this to a bylaw to go to AdCom, because I know that we had, just to get our committee, we had to go back to AdCom four times to explain what this was for the town and how it was needed, just the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a little bit of confusion here, because I think the policy is different from the bylaw. So the policy addresses what the chief has very clearly delineated, delineated, and spoken to in his last few meetings, was that this, there's a gap in terms of addressing situations where people don't have, may not have been criminally charged in situations, but yet have, have the behavior that warrants concern and and action on the part of the town to sort of prevent and to step into situations that are viewed as being potentially dangerous to minors. So this was the closing gap that the chief had identified as a situation, and this is, and also to protect the individuals, and also to protect the town, because as people will call, there was a situation involving the situation where the previous individual had never actually been criminally charged for anything either. And still yet, there were, there were situations that somewhat we could have prevented. So this is why the policy was put forward, to talk about that very type of issue. With respect to the bylaw, that's a different discussion, I think, and I think, I think, I want to be careful, you don't combine the two, because they're two different types of discussions.
Yeah, the intent wasn't to make the policy part of the bylaw, but just put a note in the bylaw to refer to the town's policy.
With respect to this type of situation.
And I, and I know I have to agree, that if people came, came out and said that they felt that Sheen was doing something, or they just felt strange or something, if they came out years ago, you know, that would have been dealt with in a totally different way than it was. It, you know, unfortunately, it was a different time back then, and people weren't educated. We have done our job as a committee, we've educated over 2,500 people. There are people out there that are watching, and they are reporting, if they see something, they say something. We're, we're training them to do just that. You know, I'm.
There's a difference between training and taking viable action. What this policy addresses is the ability to actually take an action to disinvite someone, which is not something that is actually, as a matter of policy with the town at this time. I think that's the key provision of the policy.
At any rate, I just wanted to put my thoughts out there, I'm, you know, the committee has voted its way, and.
Well, I think there's definitely some of the changes, like we can insert minors in there. The he said, she said, I mean, that language can come out, and it can just stay as considered hearsay type of information. Definitely clean it up, I would like to get something that we can all agree on. I do think it's needed, so you take Sheen, so if we all said, hey, you know, he's acting weird, or whatever, and nobody would ever come forward to do anything, and he moved to Florida, and there was an active investigation here and nothing ever happened. You know, this, this protects us where we can, no, he was never criminally charged anywhere, so nothing could happen. But if there was, you know, some investigation on him, or whatever, then this, this would, this policy would protect our children to be able to disinvite him from scouting events or anything like that, so. I think the policy does close the gap, I think we just need to clean it up a little bit more, and have it all agreeable. Does anybody else have anything on that?
Is that as far as it goes, is just to have the town council look at it, or do you have, does another agency look at it?
That would be chief and town council.
Yeah, I would think, and.
Just chief and town council?
And Bill.
What other agency would you recommend?
I don't know, I would, you know, I'd run it by the DA's office, I don't know, just. I don't know if there's anything else out there, other towns have, maybe we should be looking at that.
I don't know if there is any.
I think we've kind of set the path for the whole state so far.
We actually looked for that, there wasn't any other examples.
But it's definitely something we can ask, I mean, if we should run it by the DA's office, I mean. So why don't we try to?
Which town council looked at it? Labor, which?
Town council.
Which town council?
Was Lewis and Costello.
Okay, so they actually reviewed it and edited it?
Do we want to do that? Do we want to kind of clean it up a little bit more and just make sure that? Because I want everybody to adopt this policy and be fine with it. I don't want to, I mean, if.
No, the boards, I mean, the majority of this committee is fine with it, so.
What's, what's our board want to do?
Could approve it pending the minor changes.
I would kind of, personally, I would like to make the minor changes and then just have it reviewed one more time. Bounce it off of whoever else we can. So I don't know if you guys want to do that.
Yeah, either one's fine.
Yeah?
I can make the changes, have it reviewed one more time, and then present it for a final action at your next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
You good with that, Joe? All right, the next one is the bylaw discussion, which, I don't know if anybody here wants to start, but I've got three different ones in front of me that all pertain to the same thing. So I think it's.
Can I start?
Sure.
As a committee, we voted overwhelmingly not even have this advanced as a, as a bylaw on the warrant. We see no need, we've never had an issue come up to warranted. And we don't understand where this even came from. We're a very all-oiled committee, committee is not based on people, what they know or don't know, it's based on passion. If it wasn't for the two or three, or whatever, actually, it's a whole committee right now. The whole committee being passionate about what they're doing, it would not even be a working committee. It's a subject that not everybody wants to deal with. I, I irritated personally a little bit that where this came from. I know it wasn't with good intentions, but there's not one, there's only one person on the board, or in the police, or anything that's ever been to, I figured, 112 meetings we've had.
Except Jim.
That's the one person, yes. And Jim's been a very staunch supporter. He was with us originally when we met with Mark Sullivan, and Phil, and Linda, and formed the whole, whole bylaw in the beginning. So it's one of those things, if it's not broke, why are we fixing it, or attempting to? And that's where the committee as a whole stands. There's one slight gimme that we're willing to bend on, and that's in our selectman's report this year. Fourth goal was to structure or clarify our, our.
Our goals.
No.
You're thinking of number four of the goals that we set, right?
Right.
For the year, in our annual report.
Right, and that's to clarify what we're supposed to be doing, however we said it. And if you, if you were willing to give, give that, or whatever, as an insertion into the original bylaw, is accepted the town meeting, and inserted as item E under.
So your, your letter D is what he's referring to? He, we feel that that's an important part, that if you want to open the bylaw to be amended, that we would add your section D, which would actually be E in the main bylaw?
There's two section Ds.
With some suggested wording changes.
So section D, the second section D, the committee shall have, shall have not have any investigative authority or investigative role regarding.
Do I think that's something that we all were looking for? If you could insert that in the original voted by law, is E in the same section? It'd be useful thing.
Just so that you understand, Chris, what you have in your hand right now is what was voted on in May of 2014 at the town meeting. So this, Article 22, is what it should read in our bylaws, on our website, and everywhere.
Yeah, the website one is.
This coming from the website is like the abbreviated version, it doesn't even have the correct title for our committee, so. This is the one that has the, actually even has the amendment in there of what we did that night to.
Change the name.
Yes, the amendment was by Jim, to change the name.
Can I just, can I just speak two minutes on that? So in 2014, so I'm surprised that there's something on our website called Foxborough Child Safety Committee, and it's not what we voted.
Correct.
When this first came up in 2014, a different administration, I was told, I drafted it, and I was told specifically, it won't fly and not to do it. And the reason was, if we have a policy, and we, and we, and we miss something, then the town's liable because we didn't follow our policy. Almost the opposite of what we just talked about, you know, we're protected because we have a policy, so nobody can sue us maybe. When it was written, it was called the Child Sexual Abuse Committee, and back in 2014, it's not like it was in the 70s and 80s, but people still didn't want to talk about sex and sexual abuse. It was changed to Foxborough Child Safety Committee, and it bothered me, and it went to town meeting as Article 22, as the safety committee. Almost unanimous support, and then we stood up on the floor, and the reason is, is one of your meetings, one of the residents came and said, is this a committee about bicycle helmets? If we're going to walk the walk, we're going to call it sex, we're going to talk about molesting kids, we're going to talk about all the bad things that happen, and we're not going to call it a safety committee because we're afraid to do it. So after the town meeting voted for this warrant article, which can't be changed unless it's a town meeting, we made a motion on the floor to change it to call sex sex and not safety. So I'm furious that this is on our website after, in the last five years of dealing with this. And I don't know who wrote this and how it got to this point, but if you look at the stuff that's in here, and it's close, but they talk about, you know, child abuse, and there's almost nothing about sex in here. So child abuse is sending a kid out in the winter without a winter coat, and it, and it, a lot of times committees, you see what we're trying to do with the state, we had a really good thing, and then they tried to change it to add gun safety to it, and everything fell apart.
Exactly.
It needs to say child sexual abuse, it needs to be simple, it needs to be run by people who are doing it for the not, for the right reasons.
That's what was voted on at town meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm lengthy on this, but it's, it's just how this ends up on a website before we even get it, and before it's even voted on, and the stuff that we were very specific. This was not going to be a policy that can be changed and forgotten, it was going to be town meeting vote. So no matter who's at this table, it survives it, unless you want to go back to the town meeting to make it different.
Correct. That was frustrating for us too.
With that specific focus.
Yeah.
So one of the things we got to do is get the adopted one on our website.
So Mr. Chairman, we brought this to the attention of the town clerk. Because we don't post this information, this doesn't come from our office, it comes from the town clerk's office, because they take the minute information from the town meeting and post it on the site. They've brought it to the attention of the general code, which is where this is located, and actually asked them to correct it, which they are trying to correct it now. And so there's a, there's a new code that's coming out, apparently, this summer, is my understanding, so. We brought to their attention, they're addressing it and having it addressed with the company. So the mistake is, is in the document itself, and it needs to be corrected. So that's why it's on the website in the written form the way it is. We were frankly unaware that that was even the case, we thought that the other one had been up right along. So let me just, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I want to read into the record the recommendation that the chief had sent, he apologized for not being here tonight, but he had a family commitment. But he wanted to at least have his thoughts entered into the record for this discussion tonight. It says, I want to thank you, the board, you and the board and the committee for taking my input into consideration. Here's a summary of my position. I believe it's important for the selectmen and the committee to adopt the new policies recommended, which in my view will close a critical gap by defining the town's options when we are presented with something less than actionable criminal conduct. I also think it would be the town's best interest to amend the current bylaw with three goals in mind. First, to capture the proper name for the committee that reflects its mission, to clearly state that members of the committee should not have no investigative role, and finally, to add two additional members to the committee to ensure that people with subject matter expertise are a part of the committee's future. It's respectfully submitted by Chief Baker. So, with respect to the suggested changes, it only speaks, it's not an attempt to try and take away from the work that the committee is doing, but like many committees, there are always an op, there's always an opportunity to have subject matter expert to serve on it so as to try and help with the topics that come up that are very difficult to deal with. Oftentimes, the difficult challenges that the committee members themselves have no, have no experience dealing with themselves personally. That's why it's important to have those kind of, that kind of expertise on it to help guide the committee in the process of developing policy and educational matters before, when trying to carry out their mission. That's the only reason. It's not to try and take away from anyone or anyone's work that they've been trying to do. I understand that there's another concern about the fact that there is a, there's a provision that says that it has to be an individual that lives in the community that serves on the committee. That's something that the board should talk about because there are a number of committees where the, there are not members of the town that serve on committees. And it's a matter of town policy as to how you want to address that. So, that's something that I think has to be discussed further amongst the board members as to how you want to handle that. But there are good reasons to have just residents serve on the committees and good reasons to include a diversified group as well. So, those are the background. I mean, certainly you can take, you can decide how you want to proceed accordingly. But I think it's important to have that background for discussion.
Can I comment a little bit? I respect his opinions, et cetera, but the two things are conflicting. We have to have experts to decide that stuff, but one handed, we're saying we're not supposed to be doing that stuff. We're supposed to be spreading awareness. We're supposed to do outreach work. We have never in the five years we've had the committee had anybody come to us with any problems. They know we're there to teach and spread the awareness. We're not there to analyze anything. So, to take up two more positions by experts who may or may not live in town, who knows why they're on the committee? They may not, they may or may not have the same passion that we can get with a committee similar to what we have now. If you, if you limit it to town residents, that takes all the Pace and Road people that couldn't be on this. Some of the school superintendent, maybe firefighters, maybe police, all these people couldn't be on it. So, if you keep it volunteers, I don't care if somebody is going to Skype us from Ecuador. If they have the passion, let them give it to us. We need the passion. Right now, soon as they, we're all going to die off. You got to have people have the passion. You don't care where their little shack is. What you want is somebody to be passionate, and you can't have incumbents. If they have prior experiences or they have who knows what, you need that passion. So, it doesn't matter if they've been to school or not been to school. Not saying they don't have passion, but you know, I've dealt with state committees. They've been made up all kinds of experts from all kinds of walks of life. And I listen to them, they're not in it. They run, they don't have the passion. They don't get passionate to have things done sometimes. And that happened just recently on the, our bill. They, they were going to form this big old committee. I'm looking at the people they're proposing. It's like, it's somebody in charge of a certain department. Well, they're not going to be there. They're going to send their assistant or something. And it's diluted because it's not necessarily somebody with passion. And.
So, the original, the original bylaw says volunteers. This has been changed to residents. So, somebody that's been on this board for four or five years, and this passes, they would no longer be able to be on the board?
Correct.
And the thing that if we're going to, you know, dig into this, you know, we have the seven members, the school, safety, recreation, you know, mostly the same. The only exception, as the chief had pointed out, was that they want a clinical social worker with expertise in child abuse and exploitation. Again, you want to say it like it is. It's child sexual abuse, not child abuse. Two different monsters. But what sets me is you've got, you know, Foxborough Public Schools, public safety, this clinical social worker and a member at lodge. And then pick three from the list below. Council on Aging and Human Services, private educational or social institution, religious institutions, a private advocacy organization specializing in, again, child abuse and exploitation, and the Foxborough Board of Recreation. The Foxborough Board of Recreation member is very important because that's the majority of the people that we teach. So, you need that contact person that is out there on the fields with them, you know, that reminds them of the training that needs to be done. Obviously, religious institutions, many people go to these leaders to tell of situations before it goes to others. And Foxborough Council on Aging and Human Services, they have people there that are trained in, if you want to call it a clinical social worker expertise. So, it's like you're putting, you know, these are more important. Like you have to have someone from public schools, someone from public safety, a clinical social worker and a member at lodge. And then pick three from the, from the following four. So.
What's the current size of your board now? Seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Is that adequate?
Works fine. You know, we've never had a meeting where we've needed any extra opinions, whether it's professional or anything, because we don't deal with that stuff. It's not in our, our list of things to do.
Yeah, and if you read the, the one that was approved at town meeting, powers and duties, you know, committee will work to provide code of conduct, training of individuals, protocol for reporting incidents, yearly curriculum to be dispensed for training organizations, and a written progress report to the board. So, I agree that you don't have to have all of these experts. And if you do, chances are, well, we know the superintendent doesn't live in town. Half of these people might not even be residents of the town. And you look at every other board, it's all over the place. There's no policy that says a board has to be.
Well, boards have to be elected, so they have to be residents. Committees.
On all boards?
Not all. I mean, there's some that are appointed that, I mean, there's some that are all residents, there's some that.
That are all just town worker, town employees and.
So, it's, it's all over the map. And until we, at some point, put a policy in place that says if it's a, an appointed board, everybody has to be in Foxborough or then. There's just a lot of holes, I think.
I think there's a lot of challenges with that because it's difficult to get people to volunteer anyways.
Exactly.
And so, it'd be difficult to actually draw from that, given that limitation. But that's, that's, but that's strictly a, a town policy consideration to be, to be considered on a larger scale. Mr. Chairman, I think with respect to the comments about developing a yearly curriculum to be dispensed for training and organizations, I mean, that's, it's important to have subject matter expertise when you do that. And I think that's the whole purpose of that, is to try and provide the committee with some guidance, not just to infiltrate the committee, so to speak, but, but to help in develop policies and procedures that really would, would, would help them complete their mission. I don't know that there's anything.
I don't think we're supposed to do, you guys do policies and procedures, committees don't.
You're developing curriculum. That's part of your responsibility, Linda. It says right there in.
Right.
In the document.
And we, we go by darkness to light, and they've got a lot of professionals that we deal with.
We've had other people come in. We've had.
We've reviewed several curriculums.
We've had others come in and go over what they, their thoughts are.
We don't actually develop anything.
I think the thing to understand is, we know where to find the experts if we need them. We, a couple of us have been to Pace and Road to talk to the people up there. We talked to a lot of people. We talked to people at the State House. We talked to the state representative. The superintendent certainly has her fingers on any number of expertise if we need a referral. And, you know, if we need to do that, we know how to do it. And I, I'm not disrespecting the suggestions of the bylaw. If there's something we're lacking, you know, something we're lacking, come and talk to us. Begin by talking to us, not by writing up something that with no explanation were handed.
Well, I think that was the purpose of tonight, was to have the conversation about some of the things that, that might be, might be helpful. And I don't think anybody here is trying to, again, take away from the work that's being done. Just an opportunity to try and develop some additional help to serve, to help serve, serve the mission of the committee.
I don't know how much of a discussion we can have when we're allotted 15 minutes at a Selectments meeting.
Well, that's, that's fair, but I, but I, you know, but this is, but it's a start. I mean, it's, it's a conversation, and I think that's important to have that.
Interestingly, if this passes, so the five positions that will get filled up with the new positions, one of you guys have to leave. So, it's either you, you.
Right.
Not you, because you're in the top five, or you. So, you either get rid of the senior in, in the senior center or the institutional or the religion. So, it's just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
No, I mean, this committee, the 2,500 people that you've trained, I think you guys did, would you say 125 meetings that you've had?
Yeah, we used to have them biweekly, just since she went to once a month.
And to have them all in front of us, all basically saying, if it isn't broke, why are we trying to fix it? I think we really need to rethink this and relook at it and at least, you know, like I said, two, starting out, I've got three, three bylaws in front of me.
Well, that's what we, you know, when I.
The only one that's valid is the one.
When we gave, right, when.
That was the only one I held up.
When you gave them that last meeting, I went online so that I could, you know, compare it. And I thought, first of all, where did this even come from? Because, and then I went online, I said, well, that's where it came from. But then I went back to town meeting minutes and there it is, so.
Just to be clear, this is the one that's contained in the code. It has to be clear to everyone here. That's the one, we do not produce the code. That's done strictly through the town clerk's office. That's the information that they give to the company and they produce the code.
So, they.
Unfortunately, it was unfortunate, but it just didn't happen correctly.
So, the company gets handed.
You got to wonder how many others are up there though.
So, we don't just have somebody that enters it on the town website?
You know, because as things get amended.
This come, this came out of the code. This came out of.
Town meeting.
Where's the code?
This one is.
This is the town code.
No, this one's on the website.
You can't scan it in?
This is what's on the website. So, explain that process. So, the, the company that puts it on our website gets handed what was approved.
What happens is that we, we have a, we're given the code information, and that's updated annually by, by the service. They actually, we actually have books, there's actual books, but there's also a version that goes on the website. So, you can, you can actually pull it down without having to refer the book. It's actually right there on the.
That's what you did.
Yeah, I got all this off of websites, our website.
Yep.
So, what, who hands what to this company?
It comes from the clerk's office to, to the, to the, to the company.
So, are they taking notes then from?
Well, normally, the information comes right directly.
That looks like, that looks like a draft that went to advisory.
This one? This is the one that was on our website. This is the one from town meeting minutes.
Right.
Normally, the record would come directly from the town meeting minutes. So, I'm not sure, I can't explain why it was done this way. I don't know that answer.
Make a motion to blame Bob Cutler and move on. He's a clerk, right? I mean, it's, it's just an unfortunate thing, but yeah. It just has to be fixed.
It wasn't done intentionally. It was, it was clearly was a mistake. So, we're just, we just need to fix it. And by the way, we're in the process of doing that, so everybody's clear.
But, but I look at three things. One, it's unfortunate, chief isn't here, can't speak for himself. Which sort of, he was here last week, last time, but there was disinformation. You didn't quite grasp, get what was needed. I, I came away with it thinking that food for thought, things to discuss. We've discussed a lot of it. I mean, yeah, we have 15 minutes down.
All these other people. We've held up everybody behind us.
Yeah, but a lot, but, but a lot of times, that, that happens with a lot of things that, that we do. It's just a template. But I came away with this thinking, sort of what you had said a little earlier, that you don't know what this board is going to be like in 20 years from now. Well, I think if you look at this, it's sort of, we don't know where you guys will be 20 years from now. The board that will be here 20 years won't have the passion that you all had five years ago. And I think it's a template going forward maybe of what that board might need with people who don't have their fingers into what happened 20 years before or in 2014. That's just the way I, I came away thinking about it. Not that those changes needed to be done in the next two months, but certainly as a, as a committee going forward, how would you guys like to be replaced?
I don't, yeah, I, I don't think it bothers me that, you know, it's going to be different people here, different people there in 20 years. I think the fact is, is that at the end of the day, you guys will be, that board, your board, would, could be responsible for giving the okay to, the approval to the chief to go to someone's employer and say, hey, this is what, you know, we've got a feeling about this. We've had reports about it. I did some investigation, but I want you to know that this individual is under suspicion. I, I get a little leery with that. I mean, I've been thinking about this for over, you know, the past few weeks since we've been here. And I'm thinking to myself, so what's going to be the difference? Someone comes to my house, a few people have been coming to my house to pick up tickets for an event that I'm having, but my neighbor sees it as, there's a lot of cars coming in and out. Maybe she's dealing drugs or something. Chief comes over, he says, Linda, you know, what's going on? I get nervous. I'm like, I've got tickets and some money here that, you know, people have been coming to pick up tickets. But he comes back to the town manager and the board at the time and says, gee, you know, I don't know. She was very, you know, nervous when I approached her or something. And, you know, I, I think there's something there. I'm going to keep my eye on her, which I want him to be able to do. I want him to do a full investigation. But I want him to do that fully and find something before he comes back to you folks and says, I want you guys to tell her employer that she's under suspicion. You know, it just really feels like there's a, they want to close up the gray area, but I think this opens up gray area because you, you're doing this for someone who could be a child sexual abuser. But it could happen for someone who thinks that I'm dealing drugs or some other criminal activity. I don't know. I just feel like laws are, you know, to be followed. And at the end of the day, if we are found guilty by something or if we are prosecuted, we go through the court process and there's a process for that. And if we're found guilty, then we do our time. But to be judge, you know, judge and jury and.
One of the things, not to interrupt you, you've said it like three or four times, going to your employer. I don't see that.
Yeah, go down to, go down there if you're a resident. If you're not a town employee, you guys can make the decision not only to.
Oh, all right.
Disinvite to any public area, but to go to the employer and let the employer know, which.
Well, it says that to seek appropriate action as well. So, there is.
And you guys would make that decision, I guess.
Well, you'd be advised by council as to how to deal with that.
It doesn't say council, it says chief.
You have to use council in order to do that, in order to do that, Linda. I mean, the, the bottom line is that with respect to the investigation, the chief has already identified in the policy that he would do a very. has already identified in the policy that he would do a very, do an investigation before that, that action would be recommended. And by the way, to disinvite someone is, is probably the least onerous action you could, you could do. So, in due respect, if that's an action just to prevent and to protect people, I don't see how that would be in any way negative. Particularly if a person has, has, you know, there was clear evidence that the person had been suspected of doing inappropriate, taking any inappropriate actions. So I think it wouldn't be done. And, and when we say that, there's, there's situations where people have had, you know, involved with situations involving the law, but no, but no formal charges have been brought to them for various reasons. And that, that happens quite often. So this is a case where, in those situations, people slip through the cracks. And in this case, we're trying to, trying to close up that crack by having a policy. But again, we're talking about the policy now versus the, the bylaw. So I wanted, I...
But a policy is still a policy, and it has to be governed by you folks, so.
It's gonna be an interesting discussion with AdCom, and when we brought this...
Well, it won't, it won't go to AdCom. The policy doesn't go to AdCom. So, we're all set with that.
It's that divide where, you know, when we brought this initially, it's, you've got somebody's civil rights and somebody that's outside that you're dealing with. So you, if you don't do it, if you don't bring it forward, and something happens, it's unforgivable, right? If you bring it forward, and you're going in the wrong direction, you ruin somebody's life. So it's kind of that, it's, it's an interesting...
Yep. And we're trying to encourage people to come forward if they see something, or something is said to them. We're encouraging them to come forward and, and go to the police and let them know what you've witnessed, what you've heard, what you've seen.
But I think if, if, that's the point. If, if you bring it to the police and there's nothing they can do about it, what, what's the point? So I guess this is an opportunity to try and close that gap. That's precisely the point. You bring it to the police and there's nothing they can do about it.
Yeah. I mean, on the policy, I think it just needs to be cleaned up. And I think we have to, as a board, once it's cleaned up, vote one way or the other.
Right.
To at least close that gap. And then, on the whole bylaw, I don't know, Dave, if you have anything to add on it, but I think we're...
With, with the bylaw, if it's not broke, while we're trying to fix it, I think, clearly, a couple of amendments may, may be warranted, but I don't think we need to change the bylaw.
Well, I think, I think the, the action with respect to the committee not having any investigative authorities is important.
Right, but that's one of the points, too. And then I think, as, as far as pigeonhole, the members, it should be a suggestion. These people should be, but not limited to. If you want to add it, if you don't want to add it, that's fine with me. Seem to be doing very well over the last five years. I just hope it continues, and we can continue to find passionate people to, to fill out the, the roles of the members. You know, there's no right answer here, but I think if the, if the board's uncomfortable with the draft, then we should, we should kind of heed to their recommendations. Other ones have been living with it on a, on a regular basis. And we should, you know, take their input. So, I don't, I don't think we need to fix something that's not broken. But we should amend it where it needs to be amended.
If you're gonna open it anyways, can you change it from the report to do October first to December first? I mean, that's what we've been doing right along. I don't know where October even came from, but it was, it's been December. I don't know.
Now, on this, too, was probably the board's delay.
It might have been triggered by trying to get the report in.
It's a special, special, special time meeting, I think, yeah.
Also, probably the system with the annual time report.
Yeah.
Probably what it was, yeah.
So going by the adopted, the real one...
Yes, that's the one that we voted on.
Um, it says, one member from the Foxborough Public Schools who shall serve for initial term of three years, one member from REC for three years, one member of Public Safety for three years. Are you guys...
We haven't had anybody come to take our places, so we've kind of just been staying in our role.
Okay.
There has been a lot of turnover. When Chief O'Leary left, he was replaced. When Superintendent Spinelli left, he was replaced.
Right, right.
Smith-Booth.
But as for, you know, others to take the places of the three of us that have been on since day one, I just...
Well, I have a daughter. Bill has a daughter.
What do you mean?
I think, I think there's plenty of people that would step forward. We're not, we're dispensable.
Yes, we are dispensable, but...
To the point of, if, if there is a benefit for having those people on there, and you want to appoint somebody that is a specialist, but they're not on the list, maybe having those people, if, if we're gonna amend the, the bylaw anyways, add those as potential people that could be on there. If, if, you know, and then they come up and...
But not, not limited to... Yeah. I just wanna, if we're gonna make any amendments to this at this coming town meeting, we just need to really dig into what was approved and make sure we're all good with it.
Yeah, make sure that when it goes to AdCom, that you have the correct thing in front of them.
Okay. All right, did, did we decide anything tonight?
Regarding the policy, Lyn, my, my dear friend Linda's been very outspoken sort of against it. Nine out of ten predators are never arrested, and that's how they successfully go about their exploitation and abuse of children. If there's some way we can reach into that gap and address the way they survive, the way they hide, the way they do their thing, we're doing a good thing.
Come on, come on up and...
Can I stand here?
Uh, just the microphone, tell everybody who you are, Kathy.
I'm working for Bredey still. I'm Kathy Bredey. I live at thirty-five Co Casa Street. I've also been one of the trainers on behalf of this committee for our Darkness to Light program for almost five years now.
Thank you.
One of the things, and I've listened to all of this and read this because I'm a committed team member in all of this. It's true for this, this policy in that, yeah, reaching into that gap is something that's important to all of us that lived through that. I grew up in this town. These things happen to my friends, my colleagues, my neighbors. I don't ever want to see it happen to someone here either. We are now reaching out. We've now got two-thousand-five-hundred extra sets of eyes that are watching in that gap, and are now prepared, and given a protocol, taught what to do if they believe they've seen something or heard about this. Report it to law enforcement, let the professionals take over the investigation. A big part of people's comfort in doing that, and I hear this from the people who participate in this program all the time, is knowing, this is what we do. I don't have to sit back, be afraid that I am accusing someone. I'm not sure or no. They want to know that there's a step-by-step thing in place. The chief and our police officers are already authorized to monitor situations which they think might be unsafe, but which have not reached the level of actionable criminal activity. That's their job, and they do it well around here. And now, not only do they do it well, and have an extra awareness of the responsibility for that in this town, but we've got all of these people who are gonna help. I think that's part of reaching into that gap, and yet we still have to be very careful to make sure that the hearsay doesn't turn into something that no one in any side of the equation wants to deal with if it turns out not to be right. I think we have a very good program in place to help with that, and that, that concern shouldn't be overriding. I, I think the chief, his men and women, and the rest of the people in town, we're in a better position to do that. Does it solve it all? No. But I think we have bridged some of that gap, and not worry about it going too far. And now turning over hearsay information, albeit something that's made us nervous, that now gets turned over to ultimately a group of elected citizens, our neighbors, a volunteer board, albeit the great commitment you've made to our town, to now manage what would otherwise be extremely sensitive confidential information until it reaches the level of actionable criminal activity. And we have laws in place to do that. So I hope that would help guide some of this, because I'm gonna be part of that team, and continue to be. But I think we're doing all right with it, but we need to be careful for everyone's sake. I trust our police officers and the chief to do their job, and the rest of us are now there to help in a way that we wouldn't have been so long ago. So, that's it. Thanks.
Can I ask you, 'cause I hear what you're saying?
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm not getting your full point. Are you, you're speaking to the, the bylaw?
I'm concerned about the piece of the bylaw that would be taking, for non-employees of the town. That's the policy, the policy.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, you're right, the policy, okay.
Yes, right. Because for employees of the town, that policy is given to them, you sign on to that when you accept employment with the town, knowing that it's there. And Linda's point about, how, how do people know about this is important. For someone, it doesn't just say, and disinvitation to, to use of town property, sure, that can be done, that's easy to sort of back up. But the part about, there's been nothing that rises that the law will take care of yet, but now there's an opening for someone, well, I'm gonna take that hearsay that we, that didn't really develop enough of a mass to, to the law, and can bring that forward to someone's employer through these channels, which are not fully fleshed out legal channels, that puts, gonna put a board in a tough position if that word gets out and something ends up, it gets so mishandled, perhaps, on someone's life. Because it's a policy, again, people in town haven't voted on it. All that, I think, I think it's kind of a tough spot. I think that one particular thing, in a, as a policy, is gonna be difficult. And yet, we haven't ignored that gap. We're working on it, and, and we'd love to have perfection, but, but, but we're working on that. And that's my concern as someone who has to try to offer this to people who are being trained, and their awareness being raised. That's one of the major questions I get, is what's gonna happen, and what do I do to report something? And what's gonna happen afterwards? And the program that we've chosen to put forward after all those years tells them that everyone's gonna be protected because the professionals are gonna handle it. Oh, we're inserting a lot of people in the middle who aren't professionals, and I think that's dangerous for everyone.
One of the things you have to consider, the, the chief, current chief, past chief, the next chief, the chief after that, they're very respected people, trained professionals. They would come to us with credible stuff, not, they're not gonna come to us with hearsay.
No. But, but that is what is written into this.
Well, I think you're missing...
It specifically says that. Because credible stuff...
You're missing a step?
We already have routes we're dealing with.
So, reasonable suspicion shall be defined as an incident or pattern of conduct to which there are identifiable, reliable, incredible victims or witnesses.
Yes.
So it's not just, it's not just hearsay, it's actually an investigation.
Right. No problem with those, and there are gonna be that. But nonetheless, if it hasn't risen to the level that the law already addresses it...
But there, that's, that's the gap we're talking about. Because, because there were, because if you get, if you get into a situation with, with the law, then that's waiting for somebody to be charged formally. So this is a case where people may have avoided being charged formally by, by pleading out something.
But there's nothing, in fact, not only is there nothing stopping, but already, our law enforcement officials and professionals in town, it's already their charge, their authority and their responsibility to protect people in town while something is ongoing that ha, that hasn't gotten to the courts yet. Isn't, isn't that their job, to protect us?
Well, that's true, but if, if, if we come to a situation where it doesn't rise to the level of a criminal act, but it could in fact be an act where it relies to the level that we, we don't want that person being associated with, with young children based on their previous actions. This gives the, gives the police officers some ability to, to, to address that issue. So I guess, the point, the disconnect between what you've said and what, what I'm hearing, is that the police officer being, the, are given the opportunity to investigate, but then what do they do with it once the investigation's done?
The same thing they do with any situation where they haven't yet been able to put enough proof together, whether somebody is selling drugs, or breaking into homes, or that. They are still monitoring that person, the places, and every activity that would have been suspicious. They're here twenty-four-seven on our streets with the knowledge that they have and how to deal with that. Again, I don't think it's perfect.
An example.
But I, I think that's what we have under the law, that, and if we start reaching beyond that, I, sure, I trust, I mean, I'm not a law enforcement professional, I know I have a degree in that, but I've certainly read a lot of this and listened to what the chief has had to say. I trust him and his people to do this under the law as it is now. That's what they do for us.
So can I ask a question? Take my world, the church world. Somebody comes to Foxborough, a youth pastor, and they've previously worked in Texas and Arkansas at three churches. At each of those churches, they were fired because they were touching children. None of the churches reported it to the police, or none of the kids would testify against them, the parents didn't want them to testify. Somebody from Arkansas or Texas finds out they're now a youth pastor in Foxborough, they call the police and report that. There's no criminal conviction in those other places, but this person has a pattern of conduct that's dangerous to children, and is in a position alone with children or dealing with children. Should the police say nothing to the church?
No, not say nothing.
Well, that's all the policy is saying in terms of employer. The police investigate it, the police look into it, the police talk to parents, witnesses, the police department in those communities, then they go to the church, the school, whatever the entity is, and say, this person is not convicted, but we have a credible investigation that shows they're dangerous in this position, in contact and responsibility with children.
The difference is, in Foxborough, as you know, we've had trainings in all the churches.
Doesn't mean we know a person's background.
No, but you know what? We have, but those policies, those policies, exactly. Those policies are in, in, in the churches as there won't be an open door, you know, a closed door with one person, you won't be alone with a child. You know that.
That's impossible to enforce.
Then what are we doing? Then what are we doing?
That's the gap we're talking about.
But that's the, but that, that gap is being dealt with by, is best, is best we can.
Of course, I don't want the...
No, well, that's, that's the type of situation that it addresses.
Thanks for all your help with all the trainings as well. All right, so we're gonna clean up the policy, have it looked at again, and then the bylaw, we're gonna just kind of go through it and see what we want to amend.
Well, we're, that one section, they...
That one, the only section we're interested is that one section.
Okay.
And then while you open it up, if you can change it to December first instead of October first.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Give me some time.
If we have a little meeting, then we're supposed to be... All right, seven-thirty, a little bit behind. New town meeting warrant.
So, Mr. Chairman, you have before you the, the warrant as of, as of what we have collected as of the, as of the fifteenth. So, a lot of it is, is standard, but there is, there is a couple new items on there. You have the working warrant before you tonight, which is still being developed as we speak. There's also the, let me see, also the warrant spreadsheet, which is probably the easiest way to follow this tonight, if you want to just go through. There are, there are a total of about twenty articles right now. Actually, twenty, twenty-seven articles in total.
Okay.
Is there anything in particular that the board wants to review?
In the, the working warrant, all the language is in there for...
It's, it's still being developed, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's the, it's a draft at this point, and so we're not, we haven't finalized the language yet. It's, it's still being developed, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's the, it's a draft at this point, so we're not, we haven't finalized the language yet. I think the general, the bylaws that are being proposed are actual, are actual, actual language that's, that's actual, that's been submitted.
Does anybody have any questions on anything that's on here?
I can say with respect to the contracts, the only one that hasn't reached resolution at this point is police. Fire has reached a tentative agreement, dispatch has been resolved, library's been resolved. So we're just waiting on police at this point, and to see if that will come forward or not. We have a proposal to the union, we're just waiting for, for them to act on it.
If I could, through the chair, there's, there's one article that's kind of like a, a different one, Article 17. It was a citizen's petition. Yeah, so I, I can speak to that if you wanted, it's, it's from the, the Orpheum. And, and Mr. Paul Beck is here, who's also on the board. Ed asked him to come if he had questions on that one.
Yeah, actually, I wouldn't mind hearing, when I first read it.
Digital billboard.
Well, no, no, any nonprofit, so we're in the middle of trying to, you know, sell the firehouse and stuff. Well, what if they wanted a billboard or electronic sign type of thing? So I definitely, that caught me right off the top. So, yeah, yeah. Paul, come over to the table, too.
So just as, I, I know you're aware of this, but just kind of a brief background. So a, a group of us formed a nonprofit and we purchased the Orpheum a little over a year ago. And it's been running, and it's been kind of a, a source for a lot of the, the groups in town, the schools, the nonprofits, the sports groups. And we're completely booked up for, for the year, two, for the next year coming up, we're booked every single day except for three. Some of the meetings are, like, we, we do the business meetings there now, the JC, so all of that stuff, it's not all money-making profit stuff, but it's being used. This is Paul Beck, he's also from the beginning, came in as one of the, on a executive board of directors. So if you look at, at the Orpheum, we don't have any major changes planned outside of the building except for, there's a, the sign that, as you go around, it's facing the gas station side, as you come around the rotary on the right. We've been trying to work with it for the past year, and what it entails is going up with a ladder, changing the, there's four lines on it. It's basically a white, white background with
Plastic.
Plastic, with plastic white letter, uh, black letters. It was built 100 years ago, and it's
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three years ago. And it's just, we cannot function the way it is right now, so we looked at different things that we could do on it. So we went to the zoning board to look at working with them on their, on their sign package. They were very receptive, and actually, the chairman actually authored this, the, the, the write-up. But we felt that it was giving special preference to one group in a townwide package, that it just, it wasn't fair to them. So they drafted it with us, and we're putting it as a citizen's petition under the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center at the Orpheum. So what it is, is replacing that sign with an almost, same size, same location, identical. And what was just handed out was, we just got this today, updated, it's got the, a little more nicer angles, it's got the lion head on it. It's got some funky design around the sides, but the wording is still going to have four lines. It's going to be white background with black letters, or black letters with white background, it's not going to be moving.
No video.
No video. And, and basically, we said, all right, how can we do this and not offend the town common, not offend the history, not open it up to everybody else that wants to do that and advertise their auto parks products or, or what have you, real estate signs? So we came up with a couple. So, so you had mentioned the nonprofit, so this is the way it reads. Any nonprofit entity that is a place of assembly, the principal purpose of which is the performance and display of cultural events in the arts is authorized pursuant to a special sign permit to have one electronic message boards that faces a public way. And this, four conditions. Only information concerning the programs and events performed and held at such locations and public service information requested by the town of Foxborough may be displayed on that sign. So that, that prohibits a business from doing it, that's a nonprofit, in advertising somebody else's business on it, using them. And it also opens up the opportunity for the town to put things like school closings or emergency messages, or voting is on Monday, things like that. And, and the partnership that we've had with the town has been phenomenal, we, we work closely with the planner and a lot of the groups that are using this. So we thought that would be a, a good benefit to the town. The second one is, such signs shall be situated on the premises at which such programs and events are performed and held. Again, so it's not advertising somebody else's stuff. Three, the colors of the message boards shall be restricted to a white background and black lettering or black background with white lettering. And four, such signs shall be subject to the dimensional requirements that are applicable to the commercial uses for that type. So basically, whatever the underlying and zoning is, it can't be bigger than that. So I'd say over, for the first year, we tried to make it work, we've been through all four different seasons, and it's being changed at least once or twice a day with things coming and going. There's a, there's a narrow passage against it, so you've got to put the ladder up, climb up, change it, bring it down, and it's, it's just been two owners.
The frequency of change has been just astronomical, and because this, the, the theater is doing more things on a weekly, if not daily, basis. So to have somebody get up on a ladder in the snow, it's, it has, it's been just really risky and inconvenient. And the advantage to the town of having that emergency message board there, it's, it's done by keyboard. It could be done instantly if, if some emergency message had to be posted there.
So you said you met with the sign bylaw committee, or?
The zoning board, the zoning board, specifically.
Arnie Orfe.
Specifically to say, this is what we're looking to do. Is there a way we could do it under the current zoning bylaw? And, and I, not to speak for the board, the zoning board, but everyone was very receptive. But it was square peg, round hole, because digital boards are just not allowed within 1,000 feet of the common. And you remember, a few years ago, we brought the message board out there and Star Spangled banners were playing. It was a turnoff to a lot of people.
I still feel those pains, I still feel that pain. But can I ask you though, is this, how different would this be from the one, from the message boards? If, if in fact you did it here, and you did use the same type of lettering, wouldn't it achieve the same function on, on the common?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
This, what you're proposing here is not, it's very similar.
It's the message board.
It's the, it's the same one.
It's got a lion on, a head on it, and it's got some funny.
It looks exactly like it, though.
It, it, that's exactly what it is. And our thought process is, you know, and we had these discussions, if you, you, you put too much on it, it's actually a distraction. If it's not clear, it's more of a distraction. So how can we get the message and not disrupt the way that what people are used to? They already have the two message boards, granted, you know, Chris, you, you deal with it every week, putting it up and down.
Mike, more so than I.
It, it's, there's, it's a lot of work, and, and that, this is the same message board look, but 20 feet up in the air.
I, I'm, I'm glad we have a picture, because I was thinking, Star Spangled banners and my only, I go back to, because that, to me, could be on any building if it was done right up there, if they needed it. So I don't like the wording, and that's just.
But I think that's why we put the wording in there, so if you're a nonprofit and, I mean, that, that, there was a lot of time when the first one. If you're a place of assembly, the principal purpose of which is the performance and display of cultural events in the arts is authorized. There's no other theaters in there. Could a church do it? Probably.
Probably.
The, the church could do it, would they?
A library, but it's a town-owned building anyway, that, you know, they might want to put a sign out that does a similar events happening during the day.
So, Jim and Mr. Beck, would this now supersede that 1,000-foot?
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, the
Yeah, it would be a lot.
Sign Zone 1 within a, this would override.
Because the town people had said, we looked at this, we're okay with it. That, that's the only way that you'd be able to do it.
At town meeting.
At town meeting.
So being it's a citizen's petition, we, we really have no action on this?
No.
It goes, it goes right, right to the town meeting.
We were hoping for your endorsement.
It was similar to the, the liquor application from Hobbs and Graves, that it was a citizen petition. I, I think we voted on that.
I think we voted no action.
That one you voted no action.
I think we voted globally to accept all the warrants, and that was one of them.
We tried to think of what, if somebody was going to take a shot at this, or, or point arrows at it, it's not one of the nor, more digital signs that has video and colors flashing and, and think, it's just a plain, simple.
Nobody would even know it was digital unless they saw it changed.
I, I think the fact that you're, you're marketing it, promoting it as a digital message board is great.
And I think the fact that when I was driving up here, I saw Bob Hickey on the ladder with his knees knocking, trying to change the letters.
It's tough.
You, you can almost do that three or four times a day.
He asked me to do it once, and I just said, no, I'm not doing it. It's tough to do, it really is, and it's.
The one thing I was trying to, to clarify before we came to the meeting, and I wasn't able to get a technical answer, but some of these signs are extra bright, and the, the one in Dunkin' Donuts, if you've ever been driving near Desk, it's almost too bright, you have to squint at it. I'm pretty sure the, the brightness of the white background on these is adjustable, and it's programmable. So it wouldn't be an extremely bright spotlight that's going to cast a shadow across the, the common. But we'll look into that and make sure that that, we wanted it to be as inoffensive and innocuous, yet informative and helpful.
And can you program it remotely? Do you know?
Yes, it's done by a keyboard or a cell phone, it could be done.
Right, so in case of an emergency, throw something up.
Yeah, and then we had talked about that, we plan on working with, if something comes up with the town, if there's a early closure or something, rather than going out and trying to put it on the town common sign, you know, it, it'll show us up there, and it's almost instantly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
All right, anybody have any other warrant questions?
We'll continue to develop the language on this, and I'm ready for you. But we're, this is, we've just met the 2015, February 15th requirement, by making sure we close it by that date. So at this point, the, the board should take an appropriate action to close the warrant at this point. I think you've already typically do that at this point, when you, we have the final warrant in place.
Yeah, so nothing else can go on, but we can eliminate items, right?
Exactly. Move to close the warrant.
Actually, I'm sorry, I did have one question, unless I missed it. Article 24 was the addition to the sewer service district? That's always a hot item, if we're opening up areas of town that's not in the district already, and there's nothing in here on that.
I believe that there, I think it's just to allow houses that are actually within the district to get in, is my understanding.
It says additions to sewer service district, so it's, it's someone that's already in the district?
Yes.
In tying into it?
Yeah, now, like, every year we have like
Every year we do that, so I don't know, I don't know specifically, Jim, I want to, I don't want to, I want to say for the record, I don't know specifically, but I, my understand, I haven't been told of any new districts at this point, so.
But I thought if, if you're in a sewer district and you decide to tie into the sewer, whether it goes on or whatever, you pay the fee and you work it out, but you don't need to go to town meeting if you're already in the district. If you're outside, like, like we had the borough school, it was outside the district, they wanted to tie into it. It was a warrant article for them to, to tie sewage flow into a district that they're not in.
I can remember at town meetings having to approve ones that were already in, it's some formality, I think, unless I'm misremembering that.
It made me, it's, I'm starting to think about it now, because it could be right, Jim could be right on that, because it could be.
Need the language.
Yeah, we need the language.
Yeah.
And I don't think the language is included in the, in the actual document.
No, and then the following one, Article 25, it says modification to Zone 2. And Zone 2 has ramifications on sewer, and if you, if you increase a zone, and you can do sewer, and all of a sudden you have Zone 2, and now you can't. It may be good, but there's nothing in here other than.
Right, I don't think the actual language is finalized yet, but that's something they've been talking about. So we'll have the language for you at the next meeting.
So this is just a?
These are placeholders, these are placeholders.
Yeah, so we're voting to just, to close it, so nothing else can get added, and then we can remove if we need to. Doc, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, move to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussions? I think none, all is a favor.
All right. Just, we've closed it, but are we going to accept? Do, do we need to accept these articles, or we just closed it so nothing more can come in?
Nothing more can come in. You still typically review them and then determine, unless they're a citizen petition, you can determine if you want to endorse them or whatever.
Yeah, we usually do that. When is our deadline to, to do that?
Probably looking into, into April.
Yeah, usually just before it goes to print.
Probably middle part of April.
Next up on 7:45, a little bit late, sorry, David. FY '20 budget discussion. I don't know if anybody has anything in particular. I know Leah couldn't be here tonight, I know she had a few things, so.
I know that Dave has mentioned to me a couple, and then Doc had one too, so there's, there's, if there's other questions, I'm certainly happy to take them. But I think you, you should have a full board before you have that conversation, so if you, I, I'll defer to you, but I would hope that you want to defer on this item.
You guys want to just wait until the next meeting when Leah's here, because I know some of her questions had to do with police, fire, and they couldn't be here either, so.
Yeah, I have, I have a bunch of requests sent to Bill for information, so, which I gave him. I gave you some today, and I gave you some the other day, that you're still working on.
We're still, we're still working on those.
Do you have anything specific tonight you want to do or address, or do you want to wait?
It's, it's a positive thing, but, and I, I don't want to sound like it's a negative thing, but it, it's not a line item, and it's not a row and column, the numbers, and I reviewed the stuff, and thank you for sending the other stuff over. But when we look at the, like, look at the last meeting that we had, we had a presentation of the, of the different expense items, and then we talk about it briefly. But we're, we're absorbing the information, and then follow-up stuff that wasn't given, or we needed additional, we get it. And this isn't putting blame, because we're not doing something that I think we should be doing. But I think over the years, I think we've lost a little bit of discussion of the policy and big picture. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because you look at, you know, I've been contacted a lot over the last year and a half where the seniors who have gotten a 0% cost of living adjustment for years. You've got people that have owned houses for 20 and 30 years. A guy sent me a bill, his two, two properties that he owns, all residential from the 30s, and he showed me his tax bills, and they've gone up 15% over the last couple of years. And then you add the trash, and you add the sewer and water on top of it. Over the last duration, I've seen a population that hasn't grown with, with the students in, in the population. And granted, there's been a 40B or so here and there, but the, the population's been stagnant. We've had technology where we should be able to address a lot of the stuff with less expense, maybe, with the understanding that insurance and, and costs in health insurance and stuff. But I've seen our, our administration costs go way up, staffing go up. And at the same time, I've looked at other towns where they've actually had layoffs and cuts, and we haven't had to do that. And, and again, it's not blaming and saying we're doing anything wrong, but that discussion where And again, it's not blaming and saying we're doing anything wrong, but that discussion where, where do we say? You know, two years ago, we had talked about a tax break for the people, the residents. At the end of the day, we ended up taking that $500,000 and putting it towards capital improvement, so that's a good thing. But the increases that people are complaining about and seeing year after year in the salaries that we're giving out in the contracts. I'd like to have a discussion on a bigger picture, not the line items of line number 74 of paper costs. But where is this going and when can we say to the seniors or to the people that are struggling? We've talked about it, you know, people, they'll read the newspaper, they're not going to go to a Wednesday night meeting where we have a summit and the department head speak to us. They want to see it at this table, they want to hear that we understand it. And I'm sure you guys have gotten either complaints or feedback. But this board doesn't have that dialogue like we used to. And the good, the bad and the ugly, you want to vet it out and it feels like a restraint that I can't do that.
So on that same vein, some of the stuff I'm waiting for Bill so we can have that discussion. You know, it's an expense problem, but it's also a revenue problem. So if you look at the cherry street, the cherry sheet and our revenue and our local receipts. We're getting killed on the charter school assessment, that continually goes up. We're getting killed on the pensions, okay? We just fortunately by taxing to the levy, we're making a $4 million cash down payment on borough school, which is all good stuff. But I agree, at some point, you know, we got to take a hard look at this and see where we're going. Where we've been, where we're going and what are we going to do to try and stem the tide? And I absolutely agree.
And I, and I thank you for saying that, but I'm not, this is not a bash against administration or finance. But a couple of years, we thought we were going to be, if we took that tax cut of the quarter of 1%, whatever it was. We thought we were going to be in the red. That same year, because of the excise and the building permit fees, we got an extra million dollars. Very little mention of that. Where did it go? We didn't talk about it, right? I know where it went, you know?
It went to the borough school.
Yeah. But those discussions, it's like, hey, we weren't in the red. We've got an extra million dollars, what do we do with it? I think it has to happen a little more often. And again, I've been on the board and it hasn't happened, so it used to. But in the last five years, it's just kind of dwindled out a little bit. But you're right, there's a good story to tell because we are paying off without doing the overrides. But when you look at a population that's not growing and it's still, I mean, we all have houses, we're paying that ridiculous tax increase. At what point is enough's enough without saying something's got to change? Top set, you know, we replace top administrate, I say administrate, it's not you, but department heads. Someone goes out, someone comes in and it's at a higher level. Foxborough is a great place to work, good benefits. We don't need to keep saying, well, if we don't pay them, they're going to leave. People aren't leaving, you know? And when an application goes out, there's hundreds of applications for it. So somebody's doing something right. We don't need to keep spending at that high level. And let's take a gamble, let's lowball a little bit and see what happens, the sky's not going to fall. It feels like I'm just talking to you, but you know, this is a board discussion. I think we'll all benefit, the town will benefit if we can find some time to do it. And you know, that group that was just here, we spent what, an hour? That was a good discussion, you know, we might not agree with it, but we don't have those discussions other than we sit there and listen to a PowerPoint. And then Bill says, well, if you have any questions, we'll go through him and he'll get back to us. It's taken this dialogue almost non-existent on the budget.
You need the information, have the dialogue too, so. No, I look forward to having that because I think there's some misconceptions out there of how people are taxed. A lot of it's based on valuations, evaluation goes up, we set the tax rate, their tax bill is going to go up. You know, we play around with the split, we try and share the burden with the residents and the commercial tax base. So yeah, we should have that discussion and we should be, maybe we can do a better job explaining where the money comes from, right? And then where it goes and what the balance is. So, but I think the down payment on the borough school is a great story. Will we really save the taxpayers, you know, in the end, you know, quite a bit of money?
There's a lot of good stories to tell and I welcome the conversation because I think it's a good conversation to have.
Okay, so will you have all David's information?
Yeah, I should have, I should have all the information I need for him.
Okay. And then when we set the agenda for the next meeting, maybe let's.
It's going to be a pretty busy night that night, so just be prepared. All right, it's got a lot of stuff coming up.
All right, selectmen's update. Nothing, anybody have anything? All right.
So much for our discussion.
Town manager update.
So just a few things. We've got the CSX train meeting coming up on Friday this week and the follow up meeting on that. And we'll have a pretty extensive group here for a discussion, starting at 10:30 on Friday. Another icon meeting tomorrow night and we'll be presenting a lot of different town budgets tomorrow night. The, I just want to speak for a moment about the fire in Mansfield, the fire at the Mansfield Fire Department the other day, which was fairly serious matter. And one which is, could have happened, it's actually the second time it's happened in the state this year. Where a truck actually overheated and caught fire during the night. And the first time happened in Concord and the second time happened in Mansfield. Both times caused fairly extensive damage to both stations. And so it's still a matter of under investigation as to how that happened. But obviously, our department did everything we could to try and assist and actually received a very nice thank you note from the town manager today from Mansfield regarding the assistance that we offered to. And we stand by them to try and assist them in any way we can while they're in transition. Good news is that they're going to move into a new station probably in the next three or four months. So like, never want something like that to happen, but if it's going to happen, so the fact it's going to happen close to a new building is actually a good thing.
You mentioned the second time, was it both the same type of fire truck?
It both happened in a truck itself where the truck, there were electronics and the truck overheated. And I don't know if it was the same kind of truck, but there, it could be a manufacturer's issue. That's what they found in the first case, this one's still in the investigation. So it was a manufacturer's defect, the truck itself.
Hopefully we got different trucks than them.
Yeah, I don't think we do have the same kind of trucks, which is, I guess is a good thing. You'll see another license application coming before you either the next meeting or the meeting after that for the replacement of Toby Keith. We, I met with him preliminarily last week and it looks like they'll be preparing their documentation. Hopefully they have it in hand for you so they can start the proper notification and advertising for that license.
And they're going to put somebody in there in the entire space?
It looks like that's the case, that's what they're proposing to do. They'll do some improvements to it, but they are going to use the, for the entire space as proposed. There's also discussions ongoing, discussions now with Waxy O'Connor's as well. Just, I'm not at liberty to discuss what the details are because I don't know them. But I know that this conversation is being held right now to try and replace that property as well.
Do you know if they paid up?
I don't know that answer, I can check on it. But I know that they did receive the proper notifications and we did, I can check and see if I can confirm that. I'll check on that tomorrow, make sure. Battle Road is.
Sorry, and just as an offshoot to that, whether the liquor was taken out of the premises too.
I know that they, we had, I'd made that comment at the last meeting and just in fantasy. I later learned that you don't have to do that if in fact, until the premises actually changes hands. Until they decide, because they could have actually determined if they wanted to stay there theoretically. But it's always considered to be a safe habit to pull it out of there and not leave it on premises for obvious reasons. So they didn't push back on that, so they've actually agreed that that was the right thing to do. I guess they do have other properties that they're looking to try. The issue is that they have to get a license from the state to actually transport it and that's what they're working on right now. Battle Road is the other establishment up at Patriot Place that filed for the, for several single one day licenses. And they're following up and filing for their license, their full time license as well. And they're looking to have a yearly license.
Is that going to be like the farm type license?
Yes, it is. It's going to be a 19C license was referred to, agricultural license. So that will be, they'll be coming before you.
So they're looking to, they're going to go full bore it?
Yeah, they'll have a regular, it'll be a regular serving license, well, just for beer and beer and wine type of license.
But they can brew there.
Yeah, they're looking to brew right on premises, right. And then a police report that we received, four bids for the former firehouse and funeral home property on Friday. We're now reviewing those internally, the EDC is reviewing them as well. And they'll be recommending to probably at your next meeting as to what the finals will look like. Three of the bids came in where were considered to be in fully, in full compliance. One was still looking at to determine whether or not he fully complied with the, with the application process. And then finally, I'm working with Dean College on a possible partnership with the town of Foxborough to work on some training possibilities and also to work on things such as EMT training and paramedic training. Which is something that is a critical issue right now because there was a shortage of people in the paramedic field. So we're finding difficult times to locate those candidates. Foxborough has a new candidate coming on, but they're not, they're not easy to find because a lot of kids are not going into that. So if they do, they find themselves going into the nursing or other medical fields, but they're not particularly getting into that particular area. So there's an actual shortage. So hoping to partner with Dean College on some of those aspects, I'm meeting with them next week to try and form up some of that partnership. So that's all, that's all I have for now.
Okay, action items.
Yep, move to approve the ERE Foxborough FG LLC doing business as Five Guys Burgers and Fries common victualers license to expire on 12/31/19. This is a change in management.
Vantage.
Ownership.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation to the Historic Commission of $100 from the 28th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry for the General Historic Fund.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $20 to the Foxborough Historical Commission from Patricia Howe for the General Historic Fund.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $260 to the Council on Aging and Human Services from Friends of Foxborough Seniors for November and December Tai Chi and from Paul and Caroline Gordon and Patty and Charles Feeney in memory of Emil Ferencik. Ferencik. Ferencik.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $150 to the Council on Aging and Human Services from the Foxborough Cemetery Corp. And from Mr. and Mrs. Bruce Cushman in memory of Emil Ferencik to provide programs that benefit seniors and others at the COA HS.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Split this up, move to approve the 119 Board of Selectments minutes.
18.
119 Board of Selectments.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to approve the 12219 Board of Selectments minutes.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All is in favor of adjourned? Good night, everybody.